Last week, good morning all. Last week we were looking at Colossians, chapter 1, verses 9 and 10, 8, 9 and 10. We were continuing to learn from what Paul was talking to the church of Colossae, from Colossians, chapter 1, verses 8, where Paul says, “He also informed us of your love in the Spirit,” where Epaphras was informing Paul when he went to visit Paul in Rome, in the prison, Epaphras informed Paul about the love the church of Colossae had for their fellow saints. And Paul is writing to the church of Colossae as we saw. That’s the reason why, the reasons that we saw from verses 3 to 6, the reasons that Paul is praying to God, the reasons for which he is praising God and thanking God for all what the church of Colossae has been doing and the fruit that they have been producing throughout these years from the time they heard the gospel. And verse 9 of Colossians 1 says, “For this reason also, since the day we heard of it,” when Paul says “we,” he’s talking about Paul and Timothy. So, they have been praying for them and they have not stopped praying for the church of Colossae. And now they submit a prayer request to God about the church, where Paul asked God that the church will be filled with the knowledge of his will in all spiritual wisdom and understanding. We looked or we understood the difference between knowledge and wisdom. In last class, knowledge is what we, while we learn and while we read books or even the word of God, when we read, we get knowledge. But when we apply it in our practical life, that’s where wisdom comes into place. How and where we apply the knowledge that we receive? And then in verse 10, Paul says, what is the purpose? What is the purpose of receiving knowledge and what is the purpose of receiving wisdom? The purpose is that we will walk in a manner worthy of the Lord. So if you don’t have a purpose for what you receive from the Lord, if you don’t have a purpose for the knowledge and wisdom that you receive from the Lord, then it’s in vain. There’s no point in receiving knowledge and wisdom if you don’t apply it. Apply it, and that’s what Paul says. The knowledge and wisdom and understanding that you receive from the Lord is because you should walk in a manner worthy of the Lord. And what else do you do? You walk, you please God, you bear fruit in every good work, and then it doesn’t stop there, but rather you increase in the knowledge of God. Once you receive knowledge from the Lord, you consistently upgrade yourself by being connected to the Lord, and that’s how you increase in the knowledge of God. Once you receive the knowledge, when you are saved, you receive the knowledge of God, but that doesn’t stop there, but rather every day you are growing in the Lord, you are maturing in Christ, and that’s how you increase in the knowledge of God. And today we’re looking at verses 11 onwards. And then Paul, these are the continuation of the reasons why Paul is praying to God and thanking God for what the church of Colossae have been filled with or have been displaying through their character. “Strengthened with all power according to his glorious might for the attaining of all steadfastness and patience.” So Paul is thanking God, or Paul is thanking God, and then Paul is praying to God so that they will walk in a manner worthy. It’s a continuation of verse 10, to please God, to bear fruit, and to increase the knowledge of God. And now Paul prays to God so that the church of Colossae will be strengthened with all power. So he wants the church of Colossae to be strengthened, that they will be, they will find their source of strength in God alone. So the word power, power means the power of God. This is the same power which we see in Romans, chapter 1, verses 16. The gospel is the power of salvation to all Gentiles and Jews. That’s the same word that is used, dynamis, or the word dynamite comes from that root Greek word, power, which is used in Colossians, chapter 1:11. Dynamite or dynamis, that, that power, you can, you can realize what the power of dynamite has. That is the power of God. And when that power of God works inside our heart, then great things happen. So Paul wants the church of Colossae to be strengthened with all power or be strengthened in the power of God. So what is the result of this power? When it, when this power of God works inside a believer’s heart, when this power of God works inside the heart of a person who trusts in God, that results in God’s grace being transferred from God to us. Or God’s grace is transferred from God. God pours us, pours out his grace to us. When he gives us his power, he doesn’t, he just doesn’t give his power, but rather he gives his power, he gives his grace, he gives his mercy, he gives all the spiritual blessings along with the power of God. And this power results in grace being worked out through our lives. So the result of God’s power being manifested in the lives of, or in the life of a believer is that grace is being multiplied in us. Grace is being multiplied through us. And because of the grace poured out to us or poured out to our lives, what is our responsibility? What is our response to God’s power being strengthened in us? We should work out our salvation with fear and trembling. We don’t just receive God’s power and stand still. We don’t just receive God’s power and be at a place where we are, be at a comfort zone and just don’t do anything. But rather, when we receive God’s power every day, that is an energizer, that is an empowerment for us to work out our salvation with fear and trembling. That’s what we see in Philippians, chapter 2, verses 12 and 13. So God’s power works inside us whereby God’s power gives us empowerment. God’s power gives us grace, God’s power gives us his mercy, God’s power strengthens us every day so that we will grow in Jesus Christ. The growth in the Lord or the growth in Christian life depends upon the power that we receive from the Lord. And God empowers each one of us so that we will grow in Christ. The purpose or the purpose of the empowerment from God is that he wants us, or he wants each one of us to grow in the Lord. So the purpose of empowerment from God or the purpose of being strengthened with the power of God is that we will grow in the Lord, we will grow in Christ. And as I said, when we receive the power from God, when we, when we are strengthened with the power from God, that means we should grow or we have a responsibility to grow in Jesus Christ. We should yield and submit. So it’s not just you stand still or you, you, you don’t do anything and God give me the power, no. That is not the attitude that we need to have, but rather we need to have an attitude of submission, we need to have an attitude of yielding. We need to submit and surrender to God to receive this power because God is looking for people who seek after him. And when we seek after God, God is gracious enough to provide his power. God is gracious enough to empower us. So remember, have an attitude of yielding, have an attitude of submission, have an attitude of surrender where, where we receive God’s power and that empowerment, that power of God works in us and it strengthens us so that we will mature in Jesus Christ. We will grow in Jesus Christ. So that’s what we see in verse 11 of Colossians, chapter 1. Paul is praying to God so that the church of Colossae will be strengthened with all power. And the second statement or second phrase which Paul says is, “According to his glorious might.” So God gives us his power according to his glorious might. God is glorious, God is all-powerful, God is almighty, right? Worthy are you, Lamb, Lord God Almighty. It’s what we read in the Bible, right? And God is an almighty God. We serve a God who is almighty. We cannot comprehend the might of God. And it’s according to his might or his glorious might that he strengthens each one of us with his power. Or we are empowered by the Lord according to the might of God, according to the strength of God. And that strength or that power, we cannot comprehend. As a human being, as a person, as a finite being, God is infinite. We are finite beings and as a finite being, no human being can comprehend the power of God. That no human being can understand how God works. No human being can understand what is the might of God. So Paul is saying, “God strengthens each one of us with all power, with his power, with the power of God according to his glorious might.” And what is the purpose of strengthening us? That is what Paul says in second part of verse 11. “For the attaining of all steadfastness and patience.” So in addition to growing in the Lord, in addition to being mature in Jesus Christ, the main purpose of strengthening each one of us with the power of God according to his glorious might is for the attaining of all steadfastness and patience. In a first look, you can, you can feel, you may feel that both words are the same. In Malayalam, it says Sahishnada and Deerkshama. Or endurance is what is a good word for steadfastness and patience means. Deerkshama means long-suffering. Long-suffering is another translation which I saw for patience. And steadfastness, you can use perseverance, endurance for steadfastness. And in Greek, both, those two words have been used by, I mean, there are two Greek words for steadfastness and patience. It’s not a single word. So the attainment of steadfastness and patience, the attainment of endurance and long-suffering is the purpose of being strengthened with the power of God. Or God empowers us with his power so that we will attain steadfastness and patience. One verse that came to my mind, Ephesians, chapter 4, verses 2, where Paul writes, Ephesians, chapter 4, verses 2, Paul says, “With all humility and gentleness, with patience, showing tolerance for one another.” So Paul mentions, he talks about the unity of the spirit. And Paul wants the church of Ephesians to be filled with humility and gentleness and patience. This is the same patience that we see here. Or long-suffering, Deerkshama, showing tolerance for one another. So why is this patience need to be in our character? We need to show patience so that we will be tolerant for one another in love. Another verse, Ephesians, chapter 3, verses 16, where Paul says, “That he would grant you according to the riches of his glory to be strengthened with power through his Spirit in the inner man.” So how do you get this patience? How do you get this, or how do you get this endurance and patience? When God grants us according to the riches of his glory and according to the riches of his glory, or another, it’s the same verse that is used in a different way, “to be strengthened with the power through his Spirit in the inner man.” So how does God strengthen us with his power? Through his Spirit, through the Holy Spirit, through the Spirit of God in the inner man. That is how God strengthen us with his power. God strengthens each one of us with the power of God through the Spirit. And that Spirit is the agent, Holy Spirit, or he is the agent through whom God empowers each one of us who believe in him. So he grants us according to the riches of his glory. And here we see, he grants us power according to his glorious might, according to his riches, according to his strength, according to his glorious might. God strengthens each one of us with his power. And the purpose is the steadfastness and patience or endurance and long-suffering. Philippines 4:30, we know, “I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me.” So God wants us to work according to the will of God or to live in this world according to the will of God. And that is why he strengthens each one of us. He provides his power, he empowers each one of us so that his will will be fulfilled. And if you look at the difference between steadfastness and patience, I was looking at it and one scholar says, “Patience is for enduring difficult times and steadfastness is for enduring difficult people.” So one more time, steadfastness is for enduring difficult people and patience is for enduring difficult times. So what is the significance of that in this context? We know false teachers crept into the church of Colossae and false teachers were teaching all kinds of false teaching or they were trying to induce their agenda. They were trying to induce their false teaching in the church of Colossae. They were trying to tell the church of Colossae that you need to go back to the Old Testament laws so that faith alone is not enough, faith in Christ is not enough. But rather, in addition, okay, you can have faith in Christ. They were not denying that, but rather, in addition to what you have or in addition to the trust you have in Lord Jesus, you need to follow the Old Testament laws, the ceremonial laws, the rituals. You need to circumcise. If you haven’t circumcised, you have to go back to circumcision. Have your children be circumcised, then only you can please God. In that environment, in that atmosphere or in that setting, in that context, Paul is talking to the church of Colossae and he’s saying, “You need patience for enduring this difficult time and you need steadfastness to endure these kind of people.” So to endure in midst of these kind of difficult people or these difficult people in this context means the false teachers. When false teachers come to your church and induce false teaching, induce their own agenda, you need the patience from God to be patient in these difficult times. You need to be patient towards them and you need, you need to be patient in this difficult time that you are going through. So that is the context which Paul uses, steadfastness and patience. Remember, steadfastness is for enduring difficult people and patience is for enduring difficult times. Couple of verses that we see this word used interchangeably. These words are used interchangeably by apostles in New Testament. Very familiar words that we know, James 1:3. Why is, why does God provide us with this endurance? James 1:3 says, “Knowing that the testing of your faith produces endurance.” So why does God create circumstances where we endure? Because, James says, “Knowing that the testing of your faith produces endurance.” Endurance is being produced by the testing of your faith. When your faith is being tested, that is when you see endurance inside you. If you are a child of God, if you want to see how you endure, it depends upon how your faith is being tested. And that’s what James 1 says, “Consider all joy, my brother, and when you encounter various trials, various trials and tribulations, when you go through various trials, remember the testing of your faith produces endurance.” Another verse, which this word endurance, we know Hebrews, chapter 12, verses 2. “We are in a race and we need to fix our eyes on Jesus, the Author and Perfector of our faith, who for the joy set before him endured the cross,” or endured the cross. Why did God or why did Jesus endure the cross? Because he wanted to bring many more sons to glory because he wanted many more people to join him. That is why the writer of Hebrews says, “Despising the shame, sat down at the right hand of God.” He encourages, the writer of Hebrews encourages us to fix our eyes on Jesus. And why should we fix our eyes on Jesus? Because he is the epitome of endurance, he is the epitome of patience. He endured the cross even in the midst of all the trials that Jesus went through, even in the midst of all the shame that he went through. Among his own, from his own people, the Jews, Jesus, the Author and Perfector of our faith, for the joy endured the cross. And what was the joy? The joy was that he will bring many more sons to glory. As we read in Hebrews, in other, in another chapter, we read, “Bring many sons to glory.” He wanted many more sons to come to the saving knowledge of Jesus Christ. And in the, in 2nd Peter, we read about the same endurance. If you go to 2nd Peter, chapter 3, verses 9. Another character of God is this endurance. “The Lord is not slow about his promise; as some count slowness, but is patient toward you.” Interchangeably, the same word is used there. He’s patient, he shows his patience toward each one of us. Why? He doesn’t want anyone to perish but for all to come to repentance. The patience of God is being displayed because he wants, he doesn’t want anyone to perish, but rather he wants everyone to come to repentance. The purpose of being patient is because he wants everyone to come to repentance. He doesn’t want anyone to perish. So remember, we read, we read, “The testing of your faith produces endurance.” If you want to see how, how do you display endurance, you need to go through the test of your faith. And when you are tested, when your faith is being tested, that’s when you know that whether you have endurance or not. And remember, Hebrews 12, chapter 2, we read, “Jesus Christ is the epitome of endurance.” Jesus Christ showed that endurance when he endured the cross. And the purpose was that he will bring many more sons to glory, that he will bring many more people to repentance. He doesn’t want anyone to perish, as we read right now. And that is the purpose of endurance that Jesus Christ displayed when he was living as a human in this earth. And remember, the second word, patience. So we talked about endurance, now we talk about patience. And patience is for enduring difficult times. And as we know, Galatians 5:22, “The fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, and patience.” The fourth, the fourth characteristic of the fruit mentioned by Paul in Galatians is patience. And patience is something that we remember is used in, is used here in the context of a difficult time that the church of Colossae is going through. And what is that difficult time? They are confused. They’re confused by the false teachings. And in that difficult environment, in that difficult setting, Paul is encouraging them, saying, “You are being strengthened.” When I pray to God, God will empower each one of you. God will strengthen each one of you. And the strengthening of God’s power is to provide steadfastness and patience in this difficult time when you encounter with difficult people. So long-suffering, patience, another word is long-suffering or another word is slow to anger. And we know the Lord is slow to anger, the Lord is patient. The Lord shows his patience toward each one of us, as we read in 2nd Peter, so that everyone will come to repentance, no one will perish. 2nd Peter 3, verses 15, Peter says, “Salvation is the result of long-suffering and regard the patience of our Lord as salvation, just as our beloved brother Paul, according to the wisdom given him, wrote to you.” So there Peter mentions about Paul, his writings. Peter says in 2nd Peter, chapter 3, verses 15, “According to his promise,” whose promise? The promise of God. And what is that promise of God? We, the, 2nd Peter, chapter 3, verse 13. “According to his promise, we are looking for new heavens and new earth in which righteousness dwells.” And that is the future hope that we have. And in verse 15, he says, “Regard the patience of our Lord as salvation.” The patience of Lord is defined as salvation. So salvation is the patience of our Lord, something to note down. “Regard the patience of our Lord as salvation.” It’s a continuation from the previous word which we read. He wants repentance from all people. He doesn’t want anyone to perish but repentance. And the purpose of his patience is he wants everyone to be saved. And the patience of our Lord is salvation, just as our beloved Paul wrote to you. So Peter is mentioning about Paul. Again, Romans, chapter 5, verses 3, we know, “Tribulation produces patience,” where Paul says in Romans 5:3, not only this, but we also excel in our tribulations, knowing that tribulation brings about perseverance or tribulation brings about patience. In this context, in this verse, it’s patience. Tribulation brings patience. When you go through difficult times, when you go through trials and tribulations, when you go through difficult circumstances, those difficult circumstances produce patience in your, molds your characters so that you will be patient. So that is the purpose of us going through trials and tribulations or us going through difficult circumstances so that our patience grow, our endurance grow. In difficult times, to deal with difficult people in this Colossae church, they need the patience from God, they need the endurance from God. And if you look at the Old Testament, a great example for displaying both these characteristics, Job, we know, I don’t want to go read the verse, James 5:10-11, if you note it down, a great example for displaying patience and endurance is Job in the Old Testament. And in New Testament, there’s no one other than Jesus Christ as an epitome of endurance and patience. So remember, when we spiritually grow, when we are empowered with the strength of God, when God strengthens each one of us with his power, we receive patience and long-suffering. Or in other words, we receive steadfastness and patience from God. And that is a sign of spiritual maturity, that is a sign of spiritual growth. If we need to know whether we are growing in the Lord, we need to know whether we have patience or we need to look in our hearts. We have to examine our hearts, whether we are displaying patience with different people or whether we are displaying endurance when we go through difficult circumstances. And there is one more word given there in verse 11. “Attaining of all steadfastness and patience joyously.” Joyously, it’s, there’s an additional word in English or even in Greek they use, joyously. So you receive this steadfastness and patience joyously and there is a purpose to display that steadfastness and patience. In verse 12, we read, “Joyously giving thanks to the Father,” or giving thanks to God the Father, who has qualified us to share in the inheritance of the saints in light. So Paul says, “God strengthens each one of us with his power and the purpose according to his glorious might.” And the purpose of strengthening each one of us is so that we will attain patience and steadfastness. And for that, there is a purpose. Why do you receive this steadfastness and patience from the Lord? To give thanks to God the Father, joyously giving thanks to Father. Oh, it’s a responsibility, when we receive patience, when we receive steadfastness by the power of the Holy Spirit, we should joyously give thanks to the Father. Our, our responsibility, responsibility of a believer is to give thanks to the Father. And why should we give thanks? The same verse mentions the reason. We should give thanks to the Father because God has qualified us to share in the inheritance of the saints in light. So remember, we know the difference between joy and happiness. Joy is permanent, but happiness is temporary. And happiness is dependent on circumstances, but joy is independent of circumstances. Whether you go through a hardship, whether you go through a suffering, whether you go through a difficult time, your joy in the Lord should never change. Your joy should never shake, but rather, if you trust in the pleasures of the world, if you trust, if you are dependent on the pleasures of the world, the prosperity that the world gives, the strength that the Lord, the world gives, then your happiness will shake because when you go through difficult times, your happiness won’t be the same, as the same as you are in joyous circumstance. When you go through difficult circumstances, that’s when your faith is being tested and that’s when you come to know whether you have patience and endurance. And that is also a time whether you know you have the real joy of the Lord. Remember, the joy of the Lord is our strength, as we read in the Bible. And if you need to know that whether you have joy, you need to go through difficult circumstances because the joy, the genuine joy, the real joy never shakes, never changes. It is unchanging, but happiness changes because happiness is dependent on the circumstances we are, but joy is independent. And remember, when we lose joy, as human beings, we become critical, we became complaining. But if you have the genuine joy of the Lord inside you, if you are joyous in all circumstances, then there won’t be any complaints, there won’t be any criticism. You will be always joyously giving thanks to the Lord with all steadfastness and patience. And that is the character that God wants from each one of us. And in this context, the church of Colossae, Paul is praying for that. Paul is praying to God so that the church of Colossae will be strengthened with all power from God according to his glorious might. They will attain steadfastness, they will attain endurance, they will attain long-suffering and joyously they should give thanks to God in all circumstances. Joyously means in all circumstance, whether they are, they are going through a difficult circumstance or whether they are going through a happy circumstance as defined by the world. Whatever that is, they should be joyously giving thanks to God the Father. And the reason why they should give thanks is, Paul says, “God has qualified each one of us to share in the inheritance of the saints in light.” So thankfulness, remember, is another aspect or another aspect of God’s character that he gives to each one of us so that his power will be displayed in each one of us. We need to be thankful to God, Ephesians, chapter, a very familiar verse, Ephesians, chapter 5, verses 18 to 20. “And do not get drunk with wine, for that is dissipation; but be filled with the Spirit, speaking to one another in psalms, hymns, and spiritual songs, singing and making melody with your heart to the Lord.” Always giving thanks for all things. I think last class, we read this verse. Giving thanks for all things in the name of a Lord, Jesus Christ, to God, even the Father. So be filled in the Spirit. If you want to give thanks to God the Father every time, you need to be, be filled in the Spirit always. If you’re not filled in the Spirit, then there is a probability, there’s a chance that you may not give thanks to God. So the filling of the Spirit has a great purpose mentioned in Ephesians, chapter 5:20. What is that, what is that reason? What is the purpose? To give thanks for all things, not for some things, not for few things, not for one thing, but rather all things in the name of a Lord, Jesus Christ, to God. So when we get filled in the Spirit, when we are empowered by the Spirit, when God empowers us with his strength through the Holy Spirit, the responsibility of a believer is to speak to one another in psalms and hymns and spiritual songs, making melody with our heart to the Lord, which means it’s a time of joy, it’s a time of giving praise, a time of giving thanks in all things in the name of a Lord, Jesus Christ, even to the Father. And the reason, the second part of verse 12 of Colossians 1, “Giving thanks to the Father who has qualified.” So what has God done for us? God has qualified each one of us to share in the inheritance of the saints in light. In this context, Paul is talking about other Jews and Gentiles who have accepted Jesus Christ as their personal Savior. And that is a person, or that is whom we call a saint. A saint is a person who is called by God, who is called out to put, to carry out his particular purpose in this world, who has put his trust in the Lord, who has repented of his sin, and that is a saint. And Paul is saying, “God has qualified the church of Colossae to share among, or share in addition to those saints in light, the inheritance.” And what is that inheritance? And what is that inheritance? When we studied 1 Peter, we learned the inheritance is the heaven, the hope in heaven, the new heavens and the earth, the future, the eternity that is waiting for us. And that is our inheritance. God is still, in John 14, we see Jesus is still preparing. He's in the job of preparing houses for us. He's preparing eternity for each one of us. So the inheritance that we have received from God is unshakable. We read in 1 Peter, a couple of months back, it is unshaking, it's, this, just want to read one more time, 1 Peter, chapter 1, verses 3, if I remember, right? 1, verses 4, to obtain an inheritance, what is the characteristic of that inheritance? It is imperishable, it is undefiled, it will not fade away. And where is that inheritance? Reserved in heaven for you. Very clear, right? The inheritance that we have received from the Lord is reserved in heaven. It is an unshakable inheritance. It is an imperishable inheritance. It is an undefiled inheritance. It never fades away. It is like the character of God. God is unchanging, right? God is, God doesn't fade away. God is undefiled. God is imperishable. God, you can, you know, all the attributes of God. So is the inheritance that God gives us. It is imperishable, undefiled, will not fade away. And where is it reserved? The inheritance is reserved in heaven for each one of us. And if we go to Old Testament, the Old Testament context, we know in Exodus, all Israelites were delivered from Egypt and they were delivered from the bondage of Egypt for Canaan, right? They were traveling through Canaan or even though only two people got in, but rather God's plan was that all of them will receive the inheritance, which was Canaan in that context. Likewise, when it comes to New Testament, the inheritance reserved for each one of us is heaven. It is the eternity that is waiting for it. It is the future hope or the, in the language of Peter, it's a living hope that we have or that is the inheritance, the heavens are the, or the eternity that is waiting for us is the inheritance for each one of us. So Paul is saying, God has qualified us to receive that inheritance. We couldn't qualify ourselves. We couldn't call ourselves to be, to be saints of God, to be the children of God, but rather it was God who came and chose us. God sent his big God and Son to, to believe in him. God chose us. John 15, we see, right? We didn't choose, we didn't choose God, but rather God chose us. God elected us and God qualified each one of us to share in that inheritance that we are to receive of the saints in light. And Jesus is the true light of salvation. So these saints who are in Jesus Christ have received their inheritance, not in a complete, not in, not completely, not perfectly, but rather when we are redeemed in our bodies, when Jesus Christ comes again, we will receive that inheritance in a full manner, in a, in a, in a complete manner. But rather now we have that hope of that inheritance when we live in this world because we are a child of God. We believe in the promises of God. So we have received this privilege to share in that inheritance reserved in heaven for us. And then Paul moves on to verse 13 and 14, which I would call the gospel in Colossians as we mentioned in the first class. This is the gospel in Colossians that we see. Paul writes it very clearly. And what is that gospel? For God rescued us from the domain of darkness and transferred us to the kingdom of his beloved Son, in whom we have redemption and forgiveness of sins. So four things to note down, rescued, transferred, redemption, forgiveness. Four important aspects of salvation that we see there or four important aspects of the gospel we see there. First, in Colossians, chapter 1, verses 13 and 14. He rescued us from the domain of darkness. He transferred us to the kingdom of his beloved Son. In Jesus, we have redemption and in Jesus, we receive the forgiveness of sins. Just want to take your, take your attention to Acts, chapter 26, verses 18, where Paul preaches and you see the, a similar verse, a similar, a verse has a similar meaning there. Acts, chapter 26, verses 18, Luke says, to open their eyes so that they may turn from darkness to light and from the dominion of Satan to God, that they may receive the forgiveness of sins and an inheritance among those who have been sanctified by faith in me. Acts 26:18, just note it down. Colossians 1:13, a great relation or a similar meaning that we see. So what does God do? God has opened their eyes so that they may turn from darkness. So what is the purpose of opening our eyes? God opens our eyes so that we will turn from darkness into light. That is the purpose of opening our eyes. He opens the eyes of our hearts so that we will turn darkness away. We will turn away from darkness into light. So in, there is a goal from turning from darkness. The goal is to turn into light. And Luke says, and from the dominion of Satan to God. So two things, two turning aways happen, turning away from darkness and turning away from the dominion of darkness or dominion of Satan. So the dominion of darkness is the kingdom of Satan. That's where, in the kingdom of evil, in the kingdom of Satan, darkness prevails. And Luke says, the purpose of opening their eyes is that they may turn from darkness into light and from dominion to Satan to God. So when you are saved, when you are redeemed, when you accept Jesus Christ as your personal Savior, you turn from darkness into light. You turn from Satan to God. Now you are in the kingdom of God. Earlier you were in the kingdom of darkness. Earlier you were in the kingdom of Satan. But right now, you have turned away from darkness to light. You have turned away from Satan to the kingdom of God. How? Through the grace of God, by believing in God, by trusting in Lord. And what is the benefit of that? The benefit of that, Luke says, that they may receive forgiveness of sins and an inheritance. So two things they receive. They receive forgiveness of sin because they repented of their sins because they turned away from darkness into light. And then second thing, they receive an inheritance that we mentioned before. The inheritance is reserved in heaven for each one of us, among those who have been sanctified by faith in me or we are sanctified by faith in Jesus Christ. That is how we are being sanctified. We are positionally sanctified. God has called each one of us saints because we have put our faith in Jesus Christ. That is how we get sanctified, by putting our faith in Lord Jesus Christ, by believing in the atoning work of Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ has died on the cross and he resurrected. He has ascended in the heavens and he's coming back again and that is our living hope. So when we put our trust in Jesus Christ, when we put our hope, when we put our faith in Jesus Christ alone, we are sanctified. We receive sanctification or in other words, we receive holiness. God calls us saint when we put faith in Lord Jesus Christ. So remember, he rescued us from the domain of darkness. Who? Jesus Christ rescued us from the domain of darkness. Or in other words, God the Father rescued us from the domain of darkness through the atoning work of Jesus Christ, through the death of Jesus Christ. And that is what it says, transferred us, God transferred us to the kingdom of his beloved Son. The beloved Son is, we know, Jesus Christ. So God transferred us from the domain of darkness to the domain of light, to, to the domain of light, which is the domain of light or domain of Jesus Christ or the kingdom of Jesus. We can give different terms for that. What is the benefit? When we are transferred from the domain of darkness, when we are transferred from the kingdom of Satan to kingdom of God, we receive two things, redemption and forgiveness of sins. When we accept Jesus Christ as our personal Savior, when we put our faith in Jesus Christ, we receive redemption from the Lord. We receive reconciliation from the Lord. Different terms we can use. We are justified by God. We're justified by the blood of Jesus Christ as we read in Romans and we receive the forgiveness of sins. That is what we need the most, right? We are dead, we were dead in our sins and trespasses, but God rich in mercy came down or God sent his only big God and Son, Jesus Christ. He resurrected us through the death of Jesus Christ, the resurrection of Jesus Christ. And we receive forgiveness of sins when we believe in the atoning work of Jesus Christ, when we believe in the finished work of Jesus Christ. Jesus said, it is finished means he finished or he fulfilled the Old Testament law. He fulfilled all the commandments of the Old Testament law so that we don't need to do any works to receive this, this salvation, but rather just believe in the finished work of Jesus Christ, believe in the atoning work of Jesus Christ. And when we believe, we receive redemption and we receive the forgiveness of sins. Just one verse, Romans, chapter 3, verses 24, where Paul talks about justification. Romans, chapter 3, verses 24, being justified as a gift by his grace through the redemption which is in Jesus Christ. We have been declared righteous in the sight of God through faith in Jesus Christ, not by our works, but rather it is by grace alone. And we are justified by his grace, by grace of the Lord Jesus Christ, by the grace of God, we have redemption. And that redemption is in Jesus Christ. In the previous verse, Paul mentions, we have all sinned and fallen short of the glory of God. But when we were sinners, when we were dead in our sins and trespasses, when we were in the domain of darkness, when we were in the kingdom of Satan, when we were in the kingdom of darkness, Jesus Christ came to this world and he transferred us from the domain of Satan. He transferred us from the domain of darkness to the domain of light. And there was no reason, but rather because of his love, because of his mercy, because of his grace, you can name anything, because of his patience, because of his joy, right? He displayed all his character, all his attributes, all the attributes, all, he displayed his character by bringing many sons to glory through his sacrifice, through the atoning work or through his atoning work. Another verse, Ephesians, chapter 1, verses 7, very quickly. Ephesians, chapter 1, verse 7, Paul says, in him we have redemption through his blood or it's another, it's the same verse that we saw in Colossians, chapter 1:14, an extra statement is mentioned there. We have redemption through his blood, forgiveness of our trespasses, according to the riches of his grace. Wow. How did we receive redemption? How did we receive forgiveness? According to the riches of his grace, according to the riches of God's grace, we received redemption through the blood of Jesus Christ and we received forgiveness for our sins. God was that gracious enough that he sent his Son until the last drop of blood, right? He shed his last drop of blood for each one of us. And through that sacrifice, we receive redemption and forgiveness of sins. We know all these truths, but remember, every day we need to be reminded of this. When we go to school, when we go to our workplaces, when we are, when we are at home 24/7, this truth should keep being reminded, should be reminded in our hearts and we should examine our hearts. Are we living a life worthy of our calling? Are we living a life worthy of how God called us through Jesus Christ, his Son? So remember, we studied, God strengthens us with all his power according to his glorious might. And what is the purpose? He strengthens us, he empowers, he empowers us so that we will attain steadfastness and patience. And what is our responsibility? Our responsibility, verse 12, giving thanks to God in all circumstances. And why should we give thanks? Because God qualified each one of us to share in the inheritance, to share in the hope that is reserved in heaven for each one of us. And verse 13 and 14, Paul says, God rescued us from the domain of darkness and transferred us to the kingdom of his Son, in whom we have redemption, forgiveness of sins. Four things, four words, remember, delivered, transferred, redemption and forgiveness. Or deliverance, transfer, redemption and forgiveness. The gospel of Paul in